Sapien, thank you all for joining us today for this study session to learn about San Jose's wildfire preparedness efforts and hear from all of our partners. We are going to commence this study session. Tony, do you want to take role formally?
Yes.
I guess you probably do. Go ahead.
Kimae Campos Salas, Koin Artiz,
President.
Mulcahy,
Here.
Dwan,
Here.
Candellas,
Here.
Casey Foley,
Here.
Mahan,
Here.
Give a quorum.
Great, thank you. So I just, again, I want to thank Chief Sapien, Deputy Chief Dobson, Captain Ibarra, Rachel Roberts, and all of our other partners who have helped organize this discussion and bring in many experts who I look forward to hearing from today. I'm thrilled that we are joined by representatives from CAL FIRE, Santa Clara County Fire, Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, and San Jose State University, amongst many other partners in the audience. I understand we're joined by folks from many city departments as well as external partners at Valley Water, San Jose Water Company, PG&E, and I hope I'm not missing anyone, but those are some of the outside agencies, and then representation from a number of city departments. As we've seen across California, wildfire risk continues to grow, and the most recent fire in Los Angeles was a stark reminder of why it's critically important that we have this forum to learn, anticipate, prepare, work closely with staff and experts to be as ready as we possibly can be and do everything we can to prevent tragedy. Through the March Budget Message, Council gave clear direction to strengthen our wildfire fuel reduction work, improve data collection, and enhance collaboration with partners. I want to thank staff for expanding vegetation management efforts and begin work on a vegetation management dashboard that will help us to better track and prioritize those efforts going forward. Today is also an opportunity to explore, understand better new technologies we might be able to use. I personally am very interested in investments in aerial vegetation assessments and AI-powered risk mapping and real-time condition data gathering and analysis to help us map out strategic data-driven implementation that will keep our neighborhoods safe and ensure that in the case of a crisis, we're able to evacuate efficiently and effectively. So really look forward to hearing more about how we collectively are advancing this work and how we can continue to collaborate with county and state partners to reduce risk and protect our communities. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Sapien to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, City Council. I am Fire Chief Robert Sapien, and I am pleased to provide opening comments for today's study session. 2025 San Jose Wildfire Planning and Preparedness. In January 2025, under extreme fire weather conditions, wildfires in Los Angeles and Altadena, California claimed 30 lives, burned nearly 37,000 acres, and destroyed more than 15,000 structures. The unprecedented scale of the fires was met by state and federal resources, local agencies from within the state operating under the California Fire Service and Rescue Emergency Mutual Aid Plan, interstate mutual aid resources, and even international resources from Canada and Mexico. San Jose Fire Department response included 31 personnel who supported efforts through suppression duties and a variety of roles within the Palisades Fire and Eaton Fire Incident Command structures. The devastation left behind by the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fire rightfully focused communities across the state on their own wildfire planning and preparedness. In San Jose, City Manager Jennifer Maguire, on February 3, 2025, released the information memo to City Council titled "City of San Jose Wildfire Preparedness Update," which provided an overview of local wildfire preparedness, including information on fuels, fire fuels reduction, suppression water availability, evacuation planning, preparedness communications, and illegal fireworks mitigation efforts. There are 31,032 addresses in areas defined as Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI, in areas protected by the San Jose Fire Department. Also based upon fire hazard severity zone maps generated by the Office of the State Fire Marshal, areas protected by the San Jose Fire Department include 11,768 addresses that are located in fire hazard severity zones, with 5,737 addresses in moderate zones, 6,027 addresses in high fire hazard severity zones, and four addresses in very high fire hazard severity zones. To give a better sense of scale, FHSZ encompasses 46.2 square miles, or 29,581 acres. The threat of fire is a reality in Santa Clara County and San Jose, with each year bringing new vegetation growth, and with each fire season, vegetation growth turned to fire fuels. Fires have intensified in recent years, and while we have occupied this fire-vulnerable environment for almost two centuries, the clear lesson is that we must redouble our efforts to counter fire risk. Planning, prevention, and response actions must be ongoing and must be a community-wide effort. Today's City Council Study Session brings together individuals who bring expertise in a variety of fields, who will help to lead us through a productive conversation on wildfire preparedness topics, presentations on fuel and fire behavior, area planning and technologies, and local response and risk reduction. In the presenters box today, we have Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox, Deputy Fire Chief and San Jose Fire Marshal James Dobson, Fire Captain and San Jose Fire Department Wildland Officer Anthony Ibarra, Deputy Director Rachel Roberts from the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, Seth Shalit, Chief Executive Officer of the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, Dr. Greg Clements, Professor of Meteorology at the San Jose State University and Director of the Wildfire Interdisciplinary Research Center, CAL FIRE Unit Chief Marcus Hernandez, and Deputy Fire Chief Brian Glass from the Santa Clara County Fire Department. With that, I will turn the microphone over to Captain Anthony Ibarra, who will get us started.
Thank you, Chief Sapien. Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, Council members, and members of the public. My name is Captain Anthony Ibarra, serving as the dedicated wildland officer for the San Jose Fire Department. It is my privilege to facilitate this today's presentation on wildfire preparedness and planning for the city of San Jose. Our goal today is to provide you with a comprehensive understanding of the ongoing collaborative efforts between our department and our valued partners to protect San Jose residents and surrounding communities from wildfire threats. Following this introduction, we'll begin with an essential overview of fuels and fire behavior. I'm honored to introduce our first presenters, CAL FIRE Unit Chief Eric Hernandez and Dr. Greg Clements from the Director of Wildfire Interdisciplinary Research Center at San Jose State University. I now turn the floor over to CAL FIRE Unit Chief Eric Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Marcus Hernandez, CAL FIRE Santa Clara Unit Chief. We're going to start off with just some basics on wildland fires and how fires start and the different factors that go into it. Just like preventing and mitigating factors, it's not a single thing that goes into it. Weather, topography, and fuels will all play a vital and essential role in determining how to respond to fires, how intense that fire is going to be, and the difficulty to contain and mitigate that fire. Fuels and weather, that's pretty self-explanatory, but just to be clear, topography, think of that like the angle, how mountainous, how hilly, and when you put those together, you elevate each factor, you're going to elevate the intensity and difficulties in controlling that fire. Additionally, when it comes to fuels, their arrangement, their density, how they're organized, the type of fuel, internal oils, there's a variety of dynamic factors that go into mitigating fires, and what constitutes or what enters into their intensity. Something a little high level called a burn index or a burning index, that's kind of, we'll go over later in the presentation, but it's our base for how we're going to do our initial dispatches on the state side from CAL FIRE. What goes into the burning index, the higher the number, the more we're going to dispatch off the first, whether it's a low dispatch, medium, high. What goes into that is the spread component, and then the energy release component. So how fast is the fire going to move, and how hot is it going to be, is going to determine how hard it's going to be to contain that fire, which gets us our burning index. What's important about that, and we talk about the dispatch we're going to have on the state side, is in our CAL FIRE State Command Centers, we have incident commanders on duty all the time. Our captains and battalion chiefs are there. When the incident comes in, we can have those incident commanders, who are the captains, battalion chiefs, not just go off a standardized response, but using technology like the Alert California system. If they see this as an intense fire, they can make the call to call more engines, more resources such as tankers and helicopters, without rate waiting for a chief officer or fire equipment to arrive on scene. A little background to get us started.
I would now like to turn the floor over to Dr. Greg Clements, Director of the Wildfire Interdisciplinary Research Center at San Jose State University, who will be discussing fire weather.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and Council members. So what I want to point out here is basic fire weather conditions in San Jose. What I'm showing, what we know is that fire weather is defined as hot, dry, and windy, and we get those days all through the summer, but we don't always get the very, very windy conditions. So if we think about the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fires with a severe downslope windstorm known as the Santa Ana Wind, we have offshore wind events here as well. We call them locally as Diablo Winds or North Winds, and those are responsible for a lot of the major fires we've seen in the last decade, particularly the Santa Rosa or the Wine Country Fires of 2017. What I'm showing you is a numerical simulation, an animation of what a downslope windstorm looks like, where we have very strong winds on the lee side of the mountains, that's shaded in the red, and that is what drives these extreme fire events burning downhill. If we look at those types of conditions, and I had a student prepare this graphic on the right, the Santa Ana Wind Index for the Bay Area, and areas of shaded red are high, what we call SATI index, so high values of dry air and high winds, we can see those conditions really remain in the higher terrain of the South Bay, and that's typical of most mountain areas. We get the strongest winds at the lee side or the downslope winds, downslope side or the downwind side of the mountain range, and so that would be our east hills, you know, Mission Peak, where the strong winds are coming and descending. The fire risk for this region, based on these types of analyses, is not as well-known as it should be, and we don't even know that well, that much in LA basin, because we haven't done a lot of the critically needed field studies, setting up wind profilers, new technology, meteorological instruments, but we do know their occurrence using surface data. And so while you can see the yellow in the central valley, in the Santa Clara Valley is, you know, lower intensity of these types of wind events, it still is a problem. We still can have that, but what I would say is, we probably wouldn't see a wind event like the Eaton Fire, 100 mile an hour downslope windstorms, and the reason being is, we just don't have the terrain. We're, you know, we have 2,000 feet above sea level, and so we don't have the 8,000 to 10,000 feet above sea level that they have in LA, and so we just don't generate the strong, strong downslope windstorms. It doesn't mean that we won't, but in our climatology, we haven't really seen those type of events. It doesn't mean that we are no risk. We have risk, as indicated here. So I just want to highlight that, that we do have some of these analyses available. The next slide shows, yep, go back one. There we go. So this is a numerical simulation that's not running, but that's okay. So we have an in-house San Jose State wildfire modeling system. It's state-of-the-art. There's only five systems like this in the world. We generate these models here, and what you would see with this animation is that we can calculate the smoke concentrations from these fires. This is the 2020 Lightning Complex Fires that surrounded the South Bay, and we were simulating those in real time. Most people probably didn't know that, but we were running these operationally for our research purposes and for some members of the fire management community. And so we have these tools, and it allows us to look at fire spread in real time and smoke inundation in communities. Next slide. So another, some new operational fire risk models that we have, this is a, so what you've heard is FIRE Danger, the National Fire Danger Rating System. We have some new AI-based tools and some, you know, physics-based tools that calculate fire danger at very high resolution. This is just a snapshot of the Bay Area showing, I think this is from a couple weeks ago, showing you our hourly fuel moisture, and fuel moisture is critical. That's what allows fires to spread. On the right-hand side, we have a product that was generated with some of our faculty and researchers at PG&E, where we have an hourly fire risk map for California, so we can actually calculate this stuff at very high resolution, and this is due to the new data available that is very high resolution. So it allows us to really have these new tools in our toolbox that allow us to look at fire risk in real time. So happy to answer any questions later. Thank you.
As we examine the wildfire threat to our community, it is crucial to acknowledge that San Jose and its surrounding areas have a documented history of devastating wildfires that demonstrate our vulnerability. The CZU Fire of August of 2020, which occurred in the Santa Cruz Mountains, burned for 37 days, consuming over 87,000 acres and resulting in a $68 million loss. Concurrent with this event, the SCU Lightning Complex Fire also ignited in August of 2020, burning right up to the border of the city of San Jose. This fire ranged, raged for 46 days, scorching an unprecedented 400,000 acres, costing $70 million. Both of these fires had a significant negative impact on San Jose residents due to the widespread wildfire smoke that blanketed the city for weeks, creating hazardous air quality conditions. Looking at our regional history, the Kincaid Fire of October of 2017 had catastrophic human impact. 110,000 acres burned, 5,300 homes destroyed, and 24, I'm sorry, 24 lives lost, with an estimated $8 billion in damages. Perhaps the most instructive is the Oakland Hills Fire of 1991. Despite occurring in an urban interface environment, similar to parts of San Jose, this relatively small fire was just 1,500 acres, but it resulted in 2,843 homes destroyed, 25 fatalities, and $1.5 billion in losses. Mayor Mahan, Council members, these statistics provide important context as we consider San Jose's wildfire readiness. While our city has been fortunate, the Oakland Hills Fire experience reminds us that urban areas with similar landscape features can be vulnerable. Our shared topography, vegetation patterns, and neighborhoods bordering natural areas suggest that thoughtful preparedness would benefit our community. These images you see illustrate the destructive power of these events. As we proceed with today's presentation, we outline our strategic approach to mitigate these risks through enhanced prevention, preparedness, detection, and response capabilities. A critical component of our wildfire preparedness and response strategy is a robust and diversified water supply system. As you can see on this slide, San Jose benefits from a comprehensive network of water resources that serve our firefighting needs. Valley Water serves as our primary water wholesaler, managing the regional water resources that feed into our local distribution centers. At the citywide level, water is distributed through three main entities: the San Jose Water Company, San Jose Municipal Water System, and the Great Oaks Water Company. Each of these distributors maintains and regularly tests their respective fire hydrants, which constitutes the San Jose Fire Department's primary means of accessing water during a wildland event. I would like to highlight a particularly valuable partnership between these water distributors and our fire department. In the event of a multiple alarm structure fire or a wildland fire, these providers will deploy personnel to the scene to assist with increasing water pressure, ensuring that firefighters have adequate water supply at critical moments. This coordination has proven essential during previous large-scale incidents. Beyond our hydrant system, San Jose is fortunate to have numerous static water resources strategically located throughout the city, as listed on this slide. Almeden Lake, which you can see depicted in the bottom-right image, the El Vissou area connecting the San Francisco Bay, Anderson, Calero, and Cherry Flats reservoirs, Lake Cunningham shown in the upper right, and even residential swimming pools in the event of emergency situations. These static resources serve multiple firefighting functions. CAL FIRE's aerial firefighting operations utilizes helicopters that can draw water from lakes and reservoirs, delivering it directly to the fire line. For fire-ground operations, our engines and water tenders can draft from these resources using specialized pumping equipment when hydrants are unavailable or inefficient. In urban wildland interface areas, where hydrant infrastructure may be limited, we've deployed protocols for multiple intake drafting to increase water flow and efficiency when static sources are unavailable. This versatility in water access is vital to our overall wildfire response capability. The images you see here demonstrate some of these resources: our portable water tanks that can be filled and strategically positioned, standard fire hydrants that form our primary water infrastructure, and two key static water sources, Lake Cunningham and Almeden Lake. This diversified water supply strategy ensures that regardless of the fire's location within our jurisdiction, the San Jose Fire Department has multiple options for obtaining water resources necessary to protect our community. I would like to draw your attention to the critical aspect of our wildfire vulnerability. Get the next slide, sorry. I would like to draw your attention to the critical aspect of our wildfire vulnerability, the Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI, represented on this map of Santa Clara County. The WUI, as defined here, is the transitional area where human development, our homes, businesses, and infrastructure, directly meets or intermingles with undeveloped wildland. These areas highlighted in pink and orange on the map represent our highest-risk zones for catastrophic wildfire impacts. Of particular concern is that San Jose has been officially designated as a community at risk by the California Office of the State Fire Marshal, where we're one of 1,300 California communities with this designation, underscoring the seriousness of our wildfire exposure. The extensive WUI zones you see throughout our county, especially along our eastern and southern borders, represent areas where focused prevention, preparedness, and response strategies are essential to protecting our residents and infrastructure. Looking specifically at San Jose's Wildland Urban Interface areas outlined in green on this map, we face a complex set of risk factors that determine our attention, that demand our attention. The high fire danger in these WUI zones stems from a critical combination of environmental conditions. First, the interplay between human activity and dense vegetation significantly elevates wildfire risk. Everyday activities like vehicle use, equipment operations, and outdoor cooking can provide ignition sources in areas with abundant fuel. Second, and perhaps the most concerning, are the weather conditions that characterize our region: strong winds, low humidity, high temperatures, and at times drought conditions. These weather factors represent the most impactful driver of rapid fire spread, as we've witnessed in previous incidents. The colored zones you see on this map represent varying levels of fire hazard severity, with red and orange indicating the highest-risk locations. These areas require focused mitigation strategies and enhanced preparedness measures to protect our residents, residents, and infrastructure. Mayor Mahan, Council members, as we continue our presentation on wildfire preparedness, I'd like to direct your attention to this critical slide depicting the fire hazard severity zones within our surrounding area and San Jose. Fire hazard severity zones, or FHSZs, are specific geographic areas designated by the Office of the State Fire Marshal based on the potential for wildfires to spread and cause damage. As shown on this map, these zones are categorized into a moderate, high, or very high, indicating the average fire hazard in each area. The pink and shaded areas you see, primarily in the east and southern portions of our city, represent areas of elevated fire risk. These designations are not arbitrary. They are developed through rigorous scientific analysis that considers factors such as vegetation types, terrain, fire history, and weather patterns that contribute to fire behavior. These maps were created through a comprehensive assessment process mandated by California Government Code 51178, which requires the Director of Forestry and Fire Protection to identify areas of very high fire hazard within the local responsibility area. These laws, this law further requires local agencies like the city of San Jose to designate these zones by ordinance. In early June, the San Jose Fire Department will be formally requesting the City Council's acceptance of the updated Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map, which will be followed by introduction of ordinance for your consideration. Adoption of these maps is not merely a regulatory requirement. It will directly enhance our ability to implement appropriate building standards, vegetation management requirements, and emergency response planning in our highest-risk areas. Turning now to our recent experience with vegetation fires across San Jose. This map illustrates the distribution and frequency of incidents over the past five calendar years, from 2021 through early 2025. As you can see, we've identified several high-risk areas that consistently experience vegetation fires. These include the Almeden Valley, Alm Rock, Coyote Valley, East Foothill regions. The Guadalupe River and Coyote Creek corridors have also been frequent locations for fire activity, as well as freeway on-ramps and off-ramps throughout the city. A particularly concerning trend involves overgrown, improved, and unimproved parcels scattered across San Jose. These properties, when left unmaintained, create significant fire hazard, especially during our increasingly extended dry seasons. The heat map overlay indicates concentration of fire activity, with the darker orange-red areas showing where we've experienced multiple incidents. This data directly informs our targeted prevention efforts and resource deployment strategies. The next section of our presentation will focus on area planning. Effective wildfire preparedness is never accomplished in isolation. This slide illustrates the extensive network of partnerships that form the foundation of San Jose's wildfire resilience strategy. Externally, we maintain critical collaborative relationships with all fire departments within our operational area, ensuring seamless mutual aid during incidents. Our partners with CAL FIRE provides access to specialized wildland firefighting resources and expertise, while CAL Trans collaboration helps manage vegetation along transportation corridors that often serve as fire breaks or evacuation routes. We've also cultivated valuable relationships with community-based organizations like CERT groups and FireWise communities, which empower residents groups and fire-wise communities, which empower residents to participate actively in mitigation efforts. The Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council serves as a vital connector between agencies while partnerships with PG&E address utility infrastructure risks. Essential relationships with water utility purveyors ensure adequate water supply for firefighting operations. Internally, our cross-departmental approach includes the city manager's Office of Emergency Management coordinating our overall disaster response framework, Parks, Recreations, and Neighborhood Services managing vegetations in our city parks and open spaces, while transportation addresses roadside hazards, planning, building, and code enforcement implements fire-resistant building standards, and Environmental Services supports our sustainability goals. Developing these internal and external partnerships enhances our resource-sharing capabilities, improves our communication and coordination during incidents, and facilitates collaborative risk reduction strategies. Together, this network provides crucial support during fire season while promoting long-term community resilience against the ever-present threat of wildfires. Next, I would like to introduce the CEO of the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, Seth Chalet.
Thank you, Captain Ibarra, and good evening, Mayor Mahan and council members. I want to take this opportunity to walk you through a brief history of the Fire Safe Council, and particularly our core projects and how we interface with all of the various partners that you see here. One quick note, despite our name, the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, we're actually an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit, not a county agency, and we were organized in 2001, so we've been at this for a good, long time. As Captain Ibarra had mentioned, our core pillars are engaging local community members, working with individual neighborhoods, helping to educate around fire risk, helping communities become fire-wise enabled, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in our presentation. And we are funded by a combination of contracts with towns, cities, and quite heavily weighted on grants, particularly from CAL FIRE and several state agencies. Next slide, please. So, a couple of key things, I think, as Captain Ibarra had mentioned. You know, we have close partnerships with all of the major utilities, which includes San Jose Water. In fact, our partnership with San Jose Water has included pilot testing a number of different and new innovative wildfire AI and machine learning-based technologies, which we'll talk a little bit about later today. But if I were to describe our three core pillars, it's large-scale fuel reduction projects, and I'll talk about some of those. It is community education, community outreach, and community development. And then, thirdly, in the last three years, we've developed a technology practice where we work with local counties, municipalities, and to the extent that our fire agency partners want to engage in looking at new technologies that can be pilot-tested and determine whether they have the capacity to scale to reduce fire risk. Next slide, please. So, a brief overview of our core programs that we could bring to both the City of San Jose, and we provide these services throughout Santa Clara County already. We offer a program called Home Assessments. We call it HIZ, where we will work with the homeowners to walk them through their property and point out where the fire risk is, areas where they can reduce the fire impact, and ultimately provide them a final report that can document all this work so that they can actually take action, which would be the next step to actually do the work. We work throughout the county on community chipping programs. We provide these services to all of the Santa Clara County Fire Department towns, and we also have several private contracts with counties for both chipping and fuels management programs. Thirdly, we offer a series of rebate programs that are principally grant-funded, SNAP programs, those that may be either physically challenged or have other special needs that need wildfire risk reduction work. We can work with them to subsidize some of that work. And we also have contracts with the County of Santa Clara, Los Altos Hills Fire District, and the City of Saratoga, and the Saratoga Fire District. Next slide, please. This is, I think, a slide that both Chief or Captain Ibarra and I will talk about together, but these are some of our partnerships that we have here. We have a partnership and a reseller arrangement with an evacuation technology vendor called Ladris. I believe San Jose is using some of their tools today, particularly their EvacOne platform. Ladris complements and works with Genesis, and they both provide evacuation management, forecasting, various scenario planning, and, in the case of Ladris, fire spread analysis and fire spread management. We also have a partnership with Oritec, which is a satellite technology company. In fact, San Jose Water became recently our first customer, and they provide 24-by-7 mapping of the watershed that San Jose Water operates, but they also have fire spread analysis. And one of the reasons we use that tool is as we look to do grant programs and seek grant funding, we want to have an evidence-based way to show that we have done some detailed analysis on fuels' behavior and topology, so that if we recommend fuel breaks or other fuels' reduction projects, we have a high degree of confidence that the evidence backs those projects. Captain Ibarra.
As we advance our wildfire preparedness strategy, I'd like to highlight a couple critical technological systems that are significant in enhancing our capabilities for early detection and informed response. First, the Remote Automatic Weather System, or ROS, provides an essential foundation for our predictive capabilities. The City of San Jose's ROS weather station is located in Alum Rock Park and serves as our primary source for localized weather in a high-fire-risk area. This solar-powered station continuously gathers and transmits real-time weather data, including temperature, relative humidity, wind speed, and direction, fuel moisture levels, and precipitation. This data is critical for our wildfire management, as it allows us to accurately predict fire behavior and monitor changing fuel conditions. During high-risk weather events, these stations provide early warning signals that trigger our enhanced staffing patterns and pre-positioning of resources. The data feeds directly into our fire weather forecasting models, giving our command staff the information it needs to make a proactive, rather than a reactive, decision. Another piece of critical technology I want to highlight is the Fire Integrated Real-Time Intelligence System Program, known as FIRS. This remarkable system utilizes cutting-edge sensors and substantial computing power mounted on a crude fixed-wing aircraft to provide immediate enhanced information within minutes of arriving on scene of an emergency incident anywhere in California. When deployed, the FIRS aircraft can map fire perimeters, detect hotspots through infrared imaging, and predict fire spread in real time. The collected data is transmitted to a ground-based supercomputer and fusion center that processes and displays the intelligence instantly. Within seconds, this critical information is simultaneously distributed through a common operating platform directly to our first responders on scene, coordination leaders, and emergency managers. These technology resources represent our commitment to leveraging innovation to protect our community from the growing threat of wildfires. Next, I would like to turn it over to CAL FIRE Unit Chief Marcus Hernandez, who will be speaking on the local response to wildfires.
So, a little background on the CAL FIRE Santa Clara unit. We oversee three counties on the state side and halves of two counties. That's Santa Clara County, Alameda County, Contra Costa County, and then West San Joaquin and West Stanislas Counties. If a major incident happens in this area, not only do we rely on all our partners here to mitigate that emergency, we're bringing in resources from these counties and all of California as needed. Little background, so base staffing in our CAL FIRE Santa Clara unit will have five fire stations open with a total of six engines, and then at peak staffing, where we're at right now, on the state side, we have 12 CAL FIRE stations with 16 engines in the CAL FIRE Santa Clara unit. And then, from the air, we still have the Alma Firehawk over in the Los Gatos area. It is night vision, night flying qualified. It responds for immediate threat to human lives, threats to structures, high-value resources, and any response to inhibit the rapid growth of vegetation fires, any mission to serve the state mission of preventing wildfires from getting larger. It's in service year-round with water dropping capabilities, as well as when-appropriate rescue missions. Its tank is a 1,000-gallon tank, generally is loaded with 700 gallons. It makes a major impact. What's important to know, though, is aviation cannot stop vegetation fires. It knocks it down. Our partners here, those firefighters on the grounds, are still vital to stop these rapidly-expanding incidents. We have all our air attack bases online, so not only do we have the Alma Hell attack, we also have air tankers and another helicopter out of the Hollister Air Base just south of us, so we are readily supplied with aviation capabilities. We put our first C-130 tanker in service. A second one should come online out of Fresno in late summer, and then later this year we'll have a third C-130 in the system that will mainly do maintenance and just backup in case one goes down. What we began sharing with our partners annually is our annual operating plan. We work with all the Santa Clara County Fire Chiefs, and this just gives a frame of reference for how we work together on large emergency incidents. It goes over, you know, the different dispatch levels, whether it's low, medium, or high, what CAL FIRE on the state side will be sending, the California Fire Assistance Agreement information, staffing models, but just so we're all on the same page once an incident goes into unified command with CAL FIRE.
Next, I would like to introduce Deputy Chief from the Santa Clara County Fire Department, Brian Glass, to speak on pre-response planning and deployment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Brian Glass, Deputy Fire Chief of the Santa Clara County Fire Department. Santa Clara County Fire Department functions as the Operational Area Coordinator for the California Office of Emergency Services, or CAL OES. In this capacity, the Santa Clara County Fire Department, County Fire plays a role in coordinating mutual aid resources across the county. We work closely with our local fire response partners, especially the San Jose Fire Department, to assemble and deploy fire apparatus and overhead personnel through the mutual aid system to incidents, including wildfires, major emergencies, natural disasters throughout the county, region, and state. In addition to our operational area duties, County Fire also serves as the CAL OES Region Two Coordinator, and in this capacity as regional coordinator, we encompass the responsibility of mutual aid for 16 counties. Our mutual aid deployment to fire apparatus and overhead personnel across these counties in response to fires, emergencies, and disasters throughout the state and the region. Annually, we hold a refresher training hosted in collaboration with CAL OES, CAL FIRE, and the Operational Area Coordinator. As a matter of fact, this training is going on today and tomorrow, and it's open to all fire departments that are in the area. For those of you that may not know what a strike team is, a strike team is five engines bundled together with a leader, approximately 22 firefighters, that can deploy for up to two weeks at a time anywhere in the state of California. In this training, they cover operational procedures, including fire behavior forecasts, expected weather patterns for the upcoming fire season, and overall operational readiness. Local fire agents often participate in pre-positioned staffing initiatives, which are administered jointly by the Operational Area Coordinator and funded through CAL OES. The pre-approved staffing increases are designed to enhance preparedness during high-risk periods and are eligible for reimbursement. Importantly, this staffing is supplemental and cannot replace standard personnel levels. The program has proven highly successful and will continue to be a key part of our future preparedness effort here in Santa Clara County. All local fire agencies in coordination with CAL FIRE participate in an annual countywide wildland fire training exercise. This event ensures that all participating agencies are prepared to operate in a unified command environment and can respond with seamless coordination, effective communication, and prompt action during a major wildland fire.
Our proactive approach to wildfire readiness encompasses several key elements that ensure we can respond quickly and effectively when fires occur. Let me highlight our comprehensive pre-response strategy. The San Jose Fire Department regularly participates in specialized wildfire training internally and externally with our partnering agencies, which include drills and formal classroom training. These collaborative exercises ensure our personnel maintain crucial skills and can seamlessly integrate with other departments during multi-agency responses. When vegetation fires are reported, we've implemented a specialized dispatch and response protocol. This includes a modified initial attack strategy that sends appropriate wildland apparatus, ensures adequate water supply through water tenders, and positions resources strategically to contain fires quickly before they can spread to structures. In the event of a wildfire or vegetation fire in the foothills of San Jose during, for example, a red flag warning day, a total of 80 firefighters will be responding in the initial response, with both CAL FIRE and the San Jose Fire Department responding. This robust initial attack force demonstrates our commitment to aggressively early intervention during high-risk fire conditions. One of our most critical preparedness measures is our wildland season augmentation staffing plan. Each fire season, we establish this tiered system to address varying fire risk levels based on weather conditions and forecasted events that can increase wildfire activity, such as the Fourth of July. Finally, we maintain a comprehensive inventory of specialized wildland fire equipment, which includes four-wheel-drive apparatus, and we continuously work on infrastructure hardening to protect critical infrastructure and perform annual wildfire inventory. Our personnel deploy with the appropriate personal protective equipment, including fire shelters, you can see pictured here, which serve as a last-resort survival tool in extreme fire conditions. This layered approach to wildfire preparedness ensures we remain vigilant and ready to protect San Jose residents throughout our increasingly extended fire season.
I'll speak briefly on Genesis Protect. During the 2020 CZU and SCU Lightning Complex Fire, Santa Cruz County was actively using the Genesis platform. As the CZU fire approached the Santa Clara County border, we leveraged this tool to create targeted evacuation zones and issue alerts to our residents in the Summit Road Corridor. Building on that success, the Operational Area received a fiscal year 2122 and fiscal year 22 and 23 UWASI grant, funding the expansion of the program county-wide. This funding supported the creation of detailed evacuation zones, training for participating agencies, and the implementation of the platform across multiple communities. County Fire funded the program for the entire county beginning in fiscal year 23 and 24, for an additional year, which we continue to utilize the Genesis platform moving forward. It is split into two facets: the Protect, which is the public-facing platform where residents can learn about evacuation zones relevant to where they live, work, or travel. Knowing your zone is critical for timely evacuation and safety during emergencies. We encourage all residents to visit the site and familiarize themselves with their designated zones. The evac side of the platform is what we utilize in the field to select the zones needing to be placed into a protective action. This can include warning, order, or shelter in place. Information can be shared in a hyper-local zone to eliminate some of the spill that occurs from using some of the other systems available, like IDPaws. Evac allows shape files to be shared into commercially available alert and warning systems, and some of those systems that are in place throughout the county and here within the city. The West Valley Cities -- oh, sorry, and that'll be the end on Genesis.
The final section that we will be presenting on today will be on risk reduction. Our next speaker will be Deputy Fire Chief of the Bureau of Fire Prevention and Fire Marshal, James Dobson, and he will Marshal, James Dobson, and he will be presenting on laws, ordinance, and regulations regarding wildland fire areas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Being located in a WUI or a fire hazard severity zone is not an indication of how a residence or a home will survive in a wildland event. There's many things that our residents can do to protect their structures. The Bureau of Fire Prevention collaborates with the Development Services Partners to enforce applicable codes and standards and ordinances for properties in the wildland urban interface. These building code sections were developed using research-based approach to hardened construction with fire-resistant assemblies around the structures, including roof assemblies, wall assemblies, as well as accessory structures. The goal is to prevent ignition and limit embers from entering the structure. In conjunction with sprinkler requirements we have currently, these requirements significantly reduce risk for our residents for new construction. In our wildland urban interface zones, we have numerous residents that are legal nonconforming, that don't meet this standard but are legal. Defensible space is another requirement that allows existing construction as well as new construction to have a real good chance at surviving a wildfire event. Some of the things that are happening also at a state level are anytime that you have a sale of a property, one of these defensible space inspections is required prior to the transfer. I'm going to pass the mic to Deputy Director Rachel Roberts with Code Enforcement to discuss our vegetation management.
Thank you, Chief Dobson. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll be sharing information on Code Enforcement's efforts to further enforce the municipal code to address hazardous vegetation on private property. The city has partnered with the County of Santa Clara's Consumer Environmental Protection Agency's weed abatement program to address hazardous vegetation on vacant unimproved parcels per the San Jose Municipal Code 9.12 through an agreement that has been in place since 1995. The program relies on community engagement to report hazardous vegetation on qualifying parcels. Once the parcels are in the program, the county inspects the property ahead of the fire season to determine if a hazardous condition exists and if abatement is necessary. Prior to that annual inspection, the property owner is given the option to either remove the vegetation themselves or allow the county to perform the work based on the cost of service provided and a county administrative fee. If the owner does not address the weeds or requests that the county remove them, the county will move forward with the abatement. Private property parcels with overgrown vegetation that are improved with a building or structure are handled by our Code Enforcement Division through our Code Enforcement Case Enforcement process. The county has averaged approximately 200 to 300 parcels in their program within our city each year. Code Enforcement has responded to 518 new overgrown vegetation complaints already this year and has resolved 536 overgrown vegetation cases. Over the past five years, Code Enforcement has resolved 2,857 overgrown vegetation cases through voluntary compliance, enforcement, or abatement.
Effective wildfire preparedness extends beyond our department's operations into robust community engagement initiatives. Our public education strategy encompasses multiple platforms and programs designated to build a fire adaptive community in San Jose. Recently, we conducted a highly successful wildfire preparedness meeting at the Almeden Community Center in Council District 10. This event drew approximately 300 participants, both in person and online, demonstrating the strong interest from residents in high-risk areas. We've conducted similar outreach in Council District 8 focusing on vegetation management and evacuation planning. A cornerstone of our outreach is promoting enrollment in the Alert SCC, Santa Clara County's official emergency alert and warning system. This powerful mass notification platform provides critical information during emergencies, helping residents make informed decisions when seconds count. As we emphasize in our presentations, having the right information at the right time helps residents make the right decision during a wildfire emergency. We strongly encourage all residents to register at alertsc.org. The San Jose CERT program trains residents in basic disaster response skills like fire safety and light search and rescue. This valuable training creates neighborhood-level resilience during major incidents when professional responders may be overwhelmed. We are also proud of our Fire Wise Community Initiatives, which help neighborhoods in high-risk areas implement mitigation strategies to reduce wildfire vulnerability. This nationally recognized program has been especially valuable in our hillside communities. Our Wildfire Wednesday video series on YouTube has become increasingly popular, featuring short informative vignettes about wildfire preparedness, building fire resiliency, and step-by-step guides on what to do in the event of a wildfire event. These videos are available year-round and provide accessible information for all residents. We also coordinate with San Jose's annual media campaign on illegal fireworks, which represents a significant ignition risk during our summer months. This comprehensive campaign includes messaging across multiple platforms about the dangers, legal consequences, and reporting mechanisms for illegal fireworks. The WUI Education Project is currently being implemented as one of our most direct outreach initiatives. This program involves San Jose firefighters going door-to-door in fire hazard severity zones to have in-person conversations with residents. During these visits, our personnel provide personalized guidance on creating defensible space around homes, identifying and planning evacuation routes specific to their neighborhood, and implementing home hardening measures with fire-resistant materials. This face-to-face interaction allows us to address specific concerns and provide tailored recommendations based on the property's unique characteristics and challenges. Together, these educational initiatives create multiple touchpoints within our community, fostering a culture of preparedness and shared responsibility for wildfire safety. I would like now to discuss an essential component of our wildfire preparedness strategy, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, also known as the CWPP, and specifically Annex 10, which focuses on the city of San Jose. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is a comprehensive collaborative document that identifies specific wildfire risks facing communities and outlines prioritized mitigation strategies to reduce these risks. Established under the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of 2003, these plans enable communities to work with government agencies in determining how to reduce wildfire risk and improve forest health. The Santa Clara County CWPP provides the overarching framework with Annex 10 addressing San Jose's unique needs. As shown on this slide, one of our strategic goals with Annex 10 is to establish resilient landscape designs and managed landscapes that can withstand the impact of a wildfire. This approach recognizes that certain landscape features can significantly reduce fire intensity and spread while improving ecosystem health. To achieve this goal, we've identified several key points. First, the eucalyptus invasive species removal and native tree planting project. Eucalyptus trees, while common in our region, are highly flammable due to their oil content and abundant shedding of bark and leaves. This project involves systematic removal of these fire-prone invasive trees and replacing them with native species that are better adapted to our local fire ecology. Second, we're implementing the San Jose Parks Vegetation Management and Insulation of Fuels and Fire Brake Reduction Project. This initiative focuses on creating strategic fuel brakes in our parks and open spaces, particularly that border residential areas. These brakes help slow fire progression and create a defensible space for firefighters to safely engage approaching wildfires. It is important for me to highlight that our Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, PRNS, and the Department of Transportation have been instrumental in maintaining vegetation throughout the city. PRNS crews consistently perform critical fuel reduction work in our parks and open spaces, creating defensible space around recreational facilities along with wildland interfaces. Similarly, the Department of Transportation has been proactive in managing roadside vegetation, especially along evacuation routes and major arteries that could serve as fuel brakes during a wildfire. Their year-round maintenance activities, which intensified during high-fire danger periods, have significantly reduced potential fire loads across San Jose. Third, we've established the Elm Rock Park Fire Restrictions. As one of our largest and most visited parks with significant wildland areas, Elm Rock Park requires special attention. These restrictions include seasonal fire bans, designated smoking areas, and barbecue restrictions during periods of high-fire danger. I want to recognize and commend the Park and Neighborhood Service Rangers who deserve a tremendous amount of credit for their diligence in enforcing these critical fire restrictions. Their daily patrols, visitor education efforts, and consistent enforcement of these policies have been instrumental in preventing ignitions in high-risk areas, especially during our increasing extended fire danger season. These projects demonstrate our commitment to addressing wildfire risk through proactive landscape management, which complements our emergency response capabilities. By implementing the CWPP projects, we're building more fire resiliency in San Jose that can better withstand the increasing threat of wildfires in our region. Continuing with our wildfire protection plan, let me highlight our additional strategic goals that complement the landscape resiliency initiative discussed earlier. Our second strategy focuses on raising awareness and building resiliency in our wildland urban interface communities through targeted education and outreach. We are concentrating specifically on the east foothills and Almeden Valley planning areas shown in this image, helping residents understand evacuation routes and emergency preparedness actions. We are analyzing fire ignition patterns, particularly human-based incidents like fireworks, to inform educational programs at local schools. These initiatives are critical as we approach summer when recreational fires typically The third strategy, the third goal ensures safe and effective wildfire response capabilities. These include implementing regularly wildfire refresher trainings for all operational personnel and creating specific incident action plans for red flag warning events that allow for rapid deployment of resources when dangerous fire conditions arise. We've also leveraged advanced technologies for evacuation planning, including GIS mapping to identify vulnerable populations and early warning systems to provide timely alerts to communities. These strategy goals work together to create a comprehensive approach in addressing prevention, preparedness, and response, the essential elements of effective wildfire management. Mayor Mahan, council members, thank you for your attention to our wildfire planning and preparedness efforts. Your continued support is vital as we work to protect our residents and natural resources from the increase in challenge of the fire season. I would like to now turn it over to Fire Chief Robert Sapien for final statements and
Thank you, Captain Abara, and to our presenters for that very valuable information. Mayor, thank you for your attention and to you, City's Council as well. I did put a list of presenters in front of you to help you address your questions, or if you'd like to find out who should best answer your question, we can help you through that as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all of our presenters. That was a very informative, well-designed presentation with a lot of different components woven together. I think it's reflective of the level of collaboration you all have. I had the, I guess, opportunity, you could say, to see that up close when my family and I were living at the foothills of the San Teresa ridgeline as those fires broke out along the ridge. This was about four or five years ago, and I stupidly ended up being literally the first person up there with a fire extinguisher, which was ill-advised. But after I realized that was a bad idea, within two minutes, SJFD was up there, the pros were up there, and just a few minutes after that, CAL FIRE was up in the air, and it was a very impressive operation to see how people moved out of their homes, traffic control, and then the actual firefighting, the air support. It was really spectacular to see the level of real-time collaboration our different agencies have. So we're all very grateful to you for the work you do to protect lives and property. In the interest of time, I want to just drill down into one topic and then I'll turn to colleagues for their questions and comments. It seems to me that of all the grounds you just covered proverbially here in the presentation, one area where, and this is a hypothesis, so feel free to push back, but it seems to me an area of highest ROI for incremental work is around prevention and particularly vegetation management, fuel load reduction, and I'm especially interested to know about how data-driven our work there is. It strikes me that we're still in a place where we obviously know the zones, we have a sense of where the highest risks are. It sounds like from the professor, we've got some really interesting ways of modeling certain conditions around moisture and wind, but I'm curious about how we put that together because it still seems to me that the de facto operational mode is that we are largely reliant on property owners to do the right thing. The system's very complaint-based, and it still feels very analog and almost reactive. And I don't blame anyone for that, but my question is, do the new tools that are emerging, whether it's satellites, planes, drones, monitoring in the field, the stuff the professor laid out, does that get us to a point, whether it's for fire or maybe it's for code enforcement, does it get us to a place where we could identify in real time, okay, here's an area with a lot of concentration of fuel, low moisture levels, in an already high-risk area, where we can proactively dispatch somebody to hold a property owner accountable, which, by the way, may be a public agency? We've got to know who actually owns that area, who's responsible, and how good is our real-time data to direct our response because we're talking about a lot of acreage and we can't be everywhere all at once? So, sorry for rambling on there, but I'll kind of turn that over to the group in the box on whoever wants to comment on what's, kind of, where are we, what's the state of play today and where could we be in a couple of years if we make some investments?
I think I'll take that question, Mayor. James Dobson, San Jose Fire Department, Deputy Chief. So, great question, and I think your budget message kind of outlined some things for us to work on, really as far as that collaboration piece and using technologies as we move forward. That is something that we are evaluating on right now, not only with our regional partners such as CAL FIRE, universities as far as gathering information, but we will be placing this item on our work plan to try and continue to work on. So, over the next two years, as you indicate, I expect to see a lot of progress in that, leveraging those technologies, leveraging our relationships to kind of build out a system that can better protect our residents.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, Deputy Chief. I appreciate that. And then, Professor Clemens, are you able to maybe just comment a little bit on some of that real-time monitoring you're able to do? You shared a bit, so you don't have to give a ton of detail here, but are there particular agencies that are leveraging that real-time data for prevention? I understand the real-time response to a fire, but how can we be more strategic in code enforcement and proactive reduction of fuel?
Yeah, so there are a number of new vendors coming online that are private companies that are using both drone, satellite technologies to get at fuel loading calculations, which isn't trivial because it's very difficult just to have a top-down view, but there are some new tools coming out. One of our faculty, Kate Wilken, does home ignition One of our faculty, Kate Wilken, does home ignition zone research. She looks at communities, she takes her own drones out with students and does this at the community level, but you know, that takes a lot of time, whereas some of these aircraft-based and satellite-based tools that are getting more common will be the, the toolsets that people are probably going to be using. And so, yeah, there's new technologies coming out. I've just started seeing it. I don't know, Seth, you might want to comment on some of these vendors that you might have worked with, but we're getting there. And, and not to say that AI is going to solve everything, but it works in a lot of instances very well, and some things it doesn't. But using satellite and AI does, does tend to, that's the new thing that people are bringing to, to light.
Yeah, that's, that's what it seems to me, and it seems very promising, but I certainly don't know a ton about it. Did other staff, did you want to chime in on that?
Sure, thank you, and thank you, Professor Clemens. Certainly, there is a, a, an arms race, if you will, or a plethora of new technologies coming to market. And our, our vision at the Fire Safe Council is to help our partners kind of assess that, separate the wheat from the chaff, and figure out what out of the technology do our partners want to use? What are they looking to accomplish with it? I think Mayor Mahan, you really focused on a key component, which is how do we use data for prevention and assessment, and then taking action, right? Because it's very easy to make assessments and correlate very, you know, large data sets. It's becoming easier today, but then the key is, once you have that data, how do you then enact on it? And so there are a series of tools that we're looking at, but also, it still comes down to good old-fashioned engagement, community-level engagement with our partners at the fire service agencies doing that defensible space. But the technology is getting to a point where it can help tie return on investment, right? At the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, we often apply from grants from CAL FIRE or other entities. And what we want to bring to the table in our toolkit is the ability to say, we've ran these different grant or risk fuel reduction programs through a set of analyses, and we can say with some reasonable evidence-based confidentiality that the recommendations we're making are, are based on solid evidence data. And so, there's a lot of that that I'm seeing today, and our, our vision over the next couple of years is, is help determine which ones we can bring locally with our partners.
Thanks for that. I mean, candidly, one of the things I'm most excited about related to the MOU the city signed with Nvidia, and San Jose State has a, a sort of parallel MOU with Nvidia, is the possibility of using, whether it's the Omniverse or some other digital twinning-like technology, to really understand and feed in different data sets to really be able to model real-time risk and then be more proactive, more responsive, and get ahead of it. And really, really kind of flip on its head the old complaint-based model of code enforcement and, and really hold property owners accountable. Let me just ask, it's my final question for now, then I'll get to colleagues. Were we to live in that happy world and have all these data streams that gave us reliable real-time data on how much fuel's out there, how much moisture is there, what's the wind direction, what's the topography, what's some kind of scoring of real-time risk that we should be on top of with, with really accurate data? Do we have, do you have the ability to acre by acre identify who the owner is, or would that also be data work that would need to be done? Do we have all the parcel shape files and, and who are the owners? It, it still feels like a bit of a patchwork. I know a lot of it is city and county, but I'm sure there's some state land, and in the east foothills at least, there's a lot of private property owners. So, what's our status of, if we had that digital twin, what would, would we actually have the data to feed into it to know who the owner of the parcel is?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. That is a, an inquiry I made as we prepared for this presentation, and staff does report that we do have access to that data, but it'll take some time to work through it, overlay topography, FHSZs, all that stuff, but we do have it, and we are working towards that.
So you can know on a per, essentially acre basis, or whatever it is, who the, which parcel it is and who owns it, essentially?
We, we can create a tile layer of parcels and, and then overlay other, others as well.
Right. Okay, that's great, that's great to hear. That's, that's wonderful. Okay. I have a bunch of other questions, but let me, let's go to colleagues, and then we'll see if we have time. Let me go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the San Jose Fire Department and our Santa Clara County, and, and all those who collaborate to, to give this incredible, you know, presentation and talk about WUI. Now, this question for Dr. Clemens, as you use real-time data in order to predict the wind, you know, the topography, the low humidity, can you predict, for example, let's say there was ten, ten acres on fire, and with the topography, can you predict that within minutes in order to guide our firefighter in the best location to, not only to attack the fire effectively, but also in a safety zone?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So, so at San Jose State, our modeling system is very large-scale. It's high-resolution, but it uses HPC, so High Performance Computing Center, and it takes about an hour to run a, let's say, a million acres, okay? So it takes a lot of time to run a very large fire incident. And we are the only institute in the US that runs operationally, meaning like the Weather Service. So if there's a fire, we start running it, and it's just running, and we're spitting out the, the, the models. And so it's publicly available. We don't usually share it, because it can not always be perfect, and people start panicking. So there is a, there's a discussion in the fire modeling community whether or not to make fire model data and forecasts public to residents, because it can, you know, really kind of change the environment for people. And I, and I don't think the fire departments and the fire management agencies really want to have everybody go, well, the fire's going to go here first, why are you at our house? You know, because these models have a lot to work, they're not perfect. There are some vendors that use faster models that can, that are, these are private companies that can give you that one-minute forecast where that fire's going to go. At 10 acres, that fire is basically like a hotspot in, in, on a map. And so it can, basically what happens is, if the wind's blowing from the south, the fire's going to go north. It's that simple and rudimentary. It gets more complicated as the fire gets larger, and the fire starts creating its own weather, as we know. We see these pyrocumulonimbus events in our east hills, we see it in, in large forested environments. That's when these models break down, and that's when you have to have a weather model driving the fire, where the fire then drives the weather. And that's what we call a coupled fire atmosphere model. That takes a lot of computing power, it's not on the minute scale, because we are solving three-dimensional physics and all the equations of motion to get to the fire spread, and we're implementing new things. This is San Jose State, this is like our model. We can do spotting now and ignite spot fires, see how fires are emerging, creating all these different things. That is really computationally intense, it's probably not practical for first responders immediately. What they need is this quick little dirty fire spread, you can, there, there's a phone app, you can run it, it's called Behave, Behave Plus. It's very simple, we use a similar equation from Behave in our model, but we link it to the atmosphere, we link it to the smoke chemistry and all these kinds of things. Those tools are available right now through some private vendors that give you the initial attack, like these are, this is like Techno Silva and other vendors, where they can get that information quickly. As the fire grows and gets bigger and bigger, it gets more complicated, and those models tend to not work as well. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you. Got this question for Fire Captain Anthony Abara. Have we looked at a drone program that help us get an overhead view when there's a fire, either a structure or even wildland? And you know, that wildland can spread pretty quickly by having drone that can look at the topography, look at the escape routes, look and identify with your evacuation? Have we looking at that, including as a program that we, the doctor just mentioned, the Behave program?
So, thank you for the question, Councilmember Dwan. We currently do have a drone program within the San Jose Fire Department, which is currently operating out of our hazardous material company and also our use our companies. In the past, we have used those drones to do some overhead mapping of fires. It has been limited, limited in use, but those are options for us in the event that we were to want to request them out to an incident.
Thank you. This question is for the Santa Clara County Fire, especially with a WUI area with code enforcement and so on. A lot of these private properties, even though we, we encourage, we trying to help them to, to mitigate the, the possible growth of grass or even have trees that could catch on fire over women, children, and, and men, if you will, and, and vehicles. If they continue to not comply beside the abatement, and they do this every year, what type of enforcement can we do? Do we put a lien on their property? Do we tell them, this is, continue to do, we're going to have to do it every year? What type of enforcement that we can force them to do so?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that. However, with respect to enforcement, which is not what the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council does, I will turn that over to my agency partners.
Thank you, Councilmember Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. When we see a property that has a recurrence of this type of violation, that is creating a hazardous condition and becoming a public nuisance, in addition, in addition to our abatement procedures and administrative remedies where we can charge fines per day, which I think you're pretty familiar with, we could also coordinate with our city attorney's office to, you know, pursue legal remedies such as an injunction or a public nuisance lawsuit.
Thank you. District Five have Alm Rock, District Eight got the hills, District 10 got the quicksilver, which is high-density growth. Do we, does the Department of Forestry even do any mitigation or maintenance to reduce that amount of fire load in those area?
So CAL FIRE is constantly working to get more acreages treated, whether that's with live fire, whether that's mechanical means or other means. There's always efforts underway. We partner with Fire Safe Councils, grants to other organizations to continue this work. A lot of that work can be tracked online at Public Resources, whether through the, the CAL FIRE Fuel Treatment webpage, or through the Wildfire Enforcement Resiliency Task Force. We recently stood up the inter-agency fuel treatment tracker, which has federal resources, or federal agencies, state agencies, private timber companies. So we're always striving to do more work, but also bring awareness to the public of the work that's being done. And again, a major resource is to help, that is our Fire Safe Council's partnering agencies that help us get those acres burned, even five acres done today, and, and also making the public more aware of the value. Another thing to look at too, not yet in the area, but the state has been supporting cultural burning. The native people have been around for hundreds of years and are some of the greatest at treating fuels. You're going to see an uptick in that throughout California and probably reach this way, but always efforts to get more fuel treated.
Thank you. In District Seven, we have a, you know, the Coyote Creek, and, and there's heavy grass, pretty heavy timber as well. And I'm worrying that there, there's a lot of residential homes right around the area, and it's not being maintained, and, and I believe this probably go to our code enforcement, and how do we work with San, San Jose Water in order to get those area, you know, reduce the fire load, if you will?
Thank you, Councilmember. So when we receive a concern that involves a parcel that's, doesn't have a, a structure built on it, those are referred over to the county to incorporate into their program. And then once it's in their program, they, they remain in the program for at least three years until they can demonstrate proper compliance. If it's something that would fall within our jurisdiction in that it is a, an improved parcel, you know, we, we would work with the property owner, obviously, to, to correct that problem, hopefully permanently, but we have not currently had partnerships with San Jose Water in that regard.
Thank you. Just last question, real quick. We know that we protect our firefighter, you know, when we go into a building fire, we have process, we have protection. Wildland, yes, we have some masks, but as you well know, a lot of firefighters die from cancer. How do we prevent that, you know, over extended period of time? Let's say there are two to, two weeks out into a wildland fire and so on?
And if we do have a response, let's keep it quick. We, we got to move to the next Councilmember, and it's, we'll be on the scope of this study session, just to be clear.
Councilmember Dwan, a couple of things that we do after any fire event, whether it's vegetation or structure, we do have protocols in place for decontamination. So we ensure that firefighters decontaminate themselves, and then after the fire, they will take their personal protective equipment, bag that up, and then send that off for decontamination before. They also, all, the, all wildland firefighters, or all firefighters in San Jose have a second set of turnouts. In the event that they do get deployed, and you'd mentioned the, the two-week period, in the event that they do get deployed outside of Santa Clara County for a campaign fire, for example, the Palisades Fire, they're, they're going to be on a two-to-re, two-to-one rest cycle. So for every two hours of work, they're going to get one hour off to ensure that they're rehabilitating themselves.
Thank you, and God bless. Be safe out there.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate your questions and comments. Let's turn now to Councilmember Kame.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you so much for all you do to keep us safe. I, I noticed, you know, since the fires down in, in LA, there's been a tremendous renewal in, in making sure that emergency preparedness is something that the community is well-informed and knows about. And I was very delighted to see that the Fire, Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council is here today as a partner, because my experience way back in the day with Rick Parfitt really just, really joined together in terms of what can be done with community members in prevention and education. And I know that, you know, we've been promoting the CERT program, but they only talk about small fire suppression, the use of an extinguisher and things like that. I think that I'm very familiar with your work in the Los Gatos mountain area, and you know, sort of the Santa Cruz Mountains, but I was curious in terms of, in, in the, the second area where you're along the Diablo Mountain Range, where I think that, I don't know what your activity or your work is there, but to me, it would seem that, you know, in addition to being prepared through CERT, it would be tremendously valuable to have something along the wildland urban interface zones, where there's a lot that could be done in terms of community education and prevention. And so if, you know, I would urge my fellow council members to really take advantage of the Fire Safe Council and your knowledge. You've grown over the years. I, I looked at your staff, and I thought, wow, you've really come a long way. But I think it's really good, because the benefit is to get community members involved. And, you know, once they start doing the activities to create that defensible space, be able to really be informed about what should and should not be done, I think that it, it helps tremendously. And I, I, I don't know, so I guess my question is, what are you doing in the Diablo Mountain Range, or anywhere near Alm Rock, or those areas that are particularly, you know, especially at this time, when you start seeing it go from green to brown? And the, the growth in the, in the weeds are really, really high. I know they call them the Golden Hills, but I'm very afraid of the Golden Hills because of how fast things happen, so.
Councilmember Kame, thank you very much for your question, and I'll pass your regards on to Rick Parfitt. We, we brought him back from retirement, he's now serving on our board again, and he recently went through an IBHS certification for his home, which is a program that we at the Fire Safe Council can talk more about that. But to address your specific questions, a couple of key points. We are now currently, I believe it is the largest shore reduction project in Santa Clara County, and this is thanks to two grants we received from CAL FIRE. We're managing 2,000 acres in the Los Gatos Creek watershed, and this is a combination of what we will call forest health treatments and forest thinning, so that we can- so that we can hopefully reduce the intensity of any future wildfires. But to your specific question of what we're doing geographically, I'm more than glad to share our strategic plan and where we're doing work with you. One of the challenges we face is we want to be proactive and take a multi-year approach. But historically, being tied to grant funding makes it a little challenging to do that, because grants sometimes come, grants eventually go, and you wanna build a strategic practice so that we can do multi-year engagements. And so we're looking to expand our work with towns and cities to help offset the reliance on grant funding, so we can be more strategic and practiced. You also asked about specifically in the Alum Rock area, and I can say confidently, and I'll turn it over also to Captain Abara, that we work very closely with his team and have events planned in the Alum Rock area, and we are targeting that area very strategically this year with Captain Abara's team.
That sounds great. You know, I think that it's important, and I don't know how much the councilmembers are involved, but I know that when I was on the waterboard, it was so important to be engaged with what you're doing. So I would encourage my colleagues. I happen not to be in this zone, but I think that there's so much that can be learned from the programs that you offer. I think it would be a tremendous benefit to somehow sort of link it to what we do in the community. So if you have anything that you can offer to share with the council, I would certainly encourage that, because I think that it's really good to work on this prevention, education, before it, you know, actually happens. So, thank you so much.
If I may just add one more point to, I would encourage any councilmembers at your convenience to put your boots on and come join us on some Fire Wise engagements or take a look at some of our projects. I think it will be not only enlightening, but it'll open a dialogue about how we can get better engaged in your local districts and communities.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Let's go to Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you. And obviously, this is a issue that involves, we can see from this who's in the box, involves very, a lot of different people to keep us safe, and I appreciate the work that you all do. You know, I lived in Berkeley in 1991, 1992, whatever year that was, and could see the fire from my living room, watched the fire in the hills, and knew people who lived in that neighborhood, and it was quite an experience and something we don't want to experience here, and I'm glad that we've learned a lot from that and we're doing a lot to try to prevent it. Let me, I have a few questions. One about the Genesis system. I don't know who's the right person to answer that question. When we look in the Genesis system and we try to find San Jose-specific information there as outside observers, we don't see it. What, how are you using the system and how does that, how can the public access the system, or should they?
Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you very much. So the individual agencies need to activate their zones. The zones were created in the initial rollout for the entire county, and then they went through a vetting process where members of law enforcement, OEM, and fire sat at the table and looked at those zones. So again, the city has the zones currently. They're not available for public viewing, but they are masked. If they were to be unmasked, then you would see them. We see them in the evac side. So in the state of an emergency, we could select those zones and then place them into some type of a protective action. Again, this is in unified command, and it's in a collaborative approach with law enforcement, fire, and your OEM. So again, some of that is just process, and again, I would defer back to the City of San Jose on their process. But all agencies that wanted to activate that process and move it forward have them active today, which is the zones that you see. So there are portions in the city of San, well, it's county unincorporated that abut the City of San Jose. Those zones are active. The Alum Rock area is a prime example. And that's because some of that is county fire jurisdiction that's protected by the City of San Jose Fire Department. So again, the zones are built, they're available, they're just in the, they need to be unmasked, and I think that has to do around some city staff training and then your community engagement component or the Know Your Zone campaign.
So is there, is there like a thought process from the city's standpoint as to why we, how we're utilizing that tool and why it's protected still at this point?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. As Chief Glass pointed out, we did go through the entire process of building zones. We worked with Public Works and jointly with the Fire Department. We are in the process of training our responders for use. And as we roll out our grant-funded public outreach campaign to reach out to folks in fire hazard severity zones, we're gonna simultaneously roll out the Know Your Zone campaign, and we'll have it essentially ready for use at that point, which is really just weeks away.
Okay, great. Thank you. You know, in my district, we have the east foothills, north part of these foothills, Alum Rock Park in North. We have some neighborhoods which only have one access road in and out. So how are we working in those neighborhoods, Swiger, Suncrest, for example, to work with the community to understand what might happen in the event that there's a fire there?
Thank you for that question. So part of our education campaign is gonna be to go out to those specific areas and actually address those evacuation areas. Part of that is having firefighters actually go and knock on doors and actually make contact with the public, talk to them about their evacuation routes. And our message, in the event there's a fire, is always gonna be to evacuate early and in specifically those areas where there is limited evacuation roads.
Okay.
Just really quickly, Councilmember, as well, we had said this in the informational memorandum we put out in January, but those neighborhoods that are butting up against the wildland urban interface or are in some of the new hazardous zones that the state put out, those are being prioritized within the Office of Emergency Management for CERT training over the next two years as well, so that we can go into more specifics around not just preparedness, but about this evacuation process as well.
Okay, great. There was a fire, actually, just a couple of years ago on up Swiger, I mean, up Suncrest that came across Suncrest. It was in the farmland that's just south, just west of the neighborhood. But, you know, that fire, for a short period of time, did actually block access from the neighborhood to get out of the neighborhood, so it's certainly top of mind for that community. And that was gonna be, my next question was about that education outreach that you mentioned. Can we, should, can we as a council office, I suppose it'd be good for us to get an update as to where have you gone, what kind of conversations have you had, and what are you planning, and how you can work with our office to, for those targeted at-risk neighborhoods?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We actually are actively reaching out to your staff and other councilmember staff to try and set up and collaborate with you. And the goal there is, is you probably have better email lists, phone lists than we do, but to actually coordinate with you to actually present a presentation on that. So I'm not exactly sure, because it's part of our Office of Fire Chiefs' Public Information Manager team that is reaching out. But I know I get CC'd on the emails, and I see, I just haven't seen if they've come back to people. So, but yeah, that is happening currently.
Okay, great. That's good news. I wanna stay in touch on that. And then, you know, it was mentioned, the unincorporated areas. Obviously, that's a big issue for both District Five and Four. We have a lot of areas that are unincorporated that are in the hills. And I know that San Jose Fire Department is a primary responder. So, you know, we talk a lot about the San Jose boundaries. I'm just a bit curious about how that works in those unincorporated areas. And when we talk about the outreach that we're doing, are we focused as San Jose Fire Department only on the San Jose boundaries, or are we also doing that outreach in those unincorporated areas?
I'll take it from the county side of the House. We have done our outreach into those areas, but again, we'd be happy to partner with the City of San Jose if that's something that the city would like, to make sure that we're reaching all of those folks' fire knows no boundaries. It doesn't stop at the city line. It'll burn right into the county, or vice versa. It'll burn from the county into the city. Our goal is to make sure that the public is aware of the zone that they're in. They understand what being ready, set, and go is all about when it comes to wildfire risk, and making sure that they understand what our protective actions are, whether that's a warning, an order, or a shelter in place.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, if I can dovetail on that, just to let you know. So we have both our local responsibility areas, as well as our Zone One responsibility areas, which are unincorporated. We are including those both in the education campaign.
Great, thank you. And I know Fire Station 19 is a primary responder to many of those hills, so. My last couple of questions are about vegetation control, and I probably won't ask a lot of details today. Some of the folks who need to answer that are in PRNS and other departments. But we do have a lot of eucalyptus issues along Penitentiary Creek and up towards Alum Rock Park. And so, back to the comment about eucalyptus mitigation removal, something else I'd like to talk to, with whoever is responsible for that in the future, about how we can coordinate some of that work. And as we talk also about this, you know, I get frustrated, I continually, I continue to be frustrated by the fact that the federal government canceled our grant to do fire mitigation in Alum Rock Park. And I'm hopeful that we can come up with some creative ideas on what we can do, maybe with help from the public. When I started sharing this information with the public, we had a lot of outreach from people who said, how can we help? Can we do an event? Can we get volunteers out there to do something? How can we donate to help make this happen? So something for us to all think about is what can we do to engage the public in that area to replace and continue to do the work that we had committed that we were going to do when we had that funding? All right, thank you.
Thanks for those questions and comments, Councilmember. Let's turn to Councilmember Candellis.
You know, thank you for the presentation and for everybody in the box who helped with today's study session. A couple of weeks ago, I actually had an opportunity to attend one of those fire workshops at the first certified Fire Wise community in the villages, and Captain Abara, you were there. And, you know, so needless to say, this is an area that I, you know, I pay close attention to just because the residents are so attuned, and not to mention, my home is literally like at the bottom of the hill. So, you know, I'm not gonna be running up there with a fire extinguisher like our mayor in case of a fire, but, you know, I think like, as part of, as, you know, ever since, you know, the fire safety hazard maps were released a couple of months back, a couple of residents have reached out, you know, with concerns, with questions. And so I guess, you know, with regards to fuel reduction, you know, cattle grazing was one of the things that the villagers and the folks in the villages were able to do with the properties adjacent with the large ranch lands and open spaces adjacent. But I guess for areas in a little bit more of an urban setting, you know, I'm glad that you mentioned, Captain, the critical role that PRNS and DOT play with regards to reducing wildfire risk in our city. But, you know, you know, I think Councilmember Cohen kind of tiptoed around this question, but I guess residents have inquired about, you know, fallen vegetation, trees, eucalyptus trees in our waterways, creeks, parks? I mean, you know, how worried should they be about, you know, the risk to that causing a fire and/or, you know, following the dry corridor that is a creek bed? And, you know, it's adjacent to the foothills or right next to the foothills, and then, you know, that has the potential to cause, you know, a disaster.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Candellis. I think the important thing that I would focus on when I talk to residents regarding building fire resiliency is really taking a personal approach to each individual's own household and residence to create a fire resilient environment around their house. So creating or making sure that their gutters are cleaned out. Creating a zero-to-five zone, which is basically a zone between their house and five feet out of non-combustible materials. Having vents that are gonna have holes that are less than one-eighth inch in width, so that embers can't get into that area. As far as my relationship or the San Jose Fire Department's relationship with parks, as far as addressing vegetation management, I'm in collaboration with PRNS, probably on a bimonthly basis, to talk about hotspots within San Jose that we want to address. This coming Thursday, I'll be doing a ride-along with Jesse Escavel, one of our vegetation managers here, and we're gonna be driving around San Jose, identifying areas that we have had fires in and that there is a buildup of vegetation that we want to address.
Come to up Aborn and then you hit up Gruar, Marilla. Just kidding. No, that's perfect, and that's exactly the impetus for my question, because, you know, this year, I mean, in the budget, we're seeing, you know, for example, in my district, that we have a CFD, a community financing district, that's seeing a, you know, 20% reduction in funding. And a lot of the concerns I've gotten over the last couple of months is, hey, there's overgrown weeds and an increase in weeds that we typically don't see adjacent to the road. And so now their flagging is as a potential fire risk, and I mean, I'm not the expert on this. I don't know. And so is it tangible? I mean, I see Leland's jumping at the bit to respond, but.
Is that Community Facilities Districts Two and Three, the one by Clark Elementary School?
Correct.
Yes, I am aware of that one. Yeah, I think we would, you know, probably ask staff to include that as part of the ride-along. We've been able to, with a few of the Community Facilities Districts that have had large reserves, spend more than what we've been able to in the past. So that reduction is largely around just the reserve going down. But we can be super disciplined, not just with the group here, but across the city, which already happens like in Alum Rock and other places. But like, that area that you're talking about is, part of that neighborhood is now within some of the new zone. So we can be very purposeful with just the budgets within those CFDs around, you know, better plant resistance, like what we're gonna put in there, the, you know, plants that, you know, don't catch on fire, like eucalyptus trees, you know, per se, and other things, and kind of prioritize funding in those areas. In addition to all the outreach that we need to do around residents, because a lot of those neighborhoods, I think, Fire is right. It is about the private property, but we also have a lot of public property in those CFDs that we can go ahead and maintain and be a little bit more purposeful about.
No, I appreciate that, and it's a balance, and that's exactly the point. And, you know, how do we balance, you know, public safety concerns and fire risk with, you know, our budgets and staying within our budgets? And, you know, last question, I know Councilmember Cohen asked about evacuations, and, you know, I guess, so his question kind of answered, or his question kind of answered the question I had. So, no, I appreciate the work, and I appreciate the support. Whenever folks in my district's call or wanna workshop on wildfire, you all are there. So appreciate that, Chief, and everybody in the box.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the great questions from colleagues, and once again, wanna thank all of our presenters. This was informative and part of an ongoing conversation we need to have through our budget process, but really year-round, related to all forms of emergency, preparedness, response, risk mitigation. But fire risk, obviously, extremely top of mind and probably our most frequent risk factor in the city when we think of these natural disasters. So really grateful to you all for, not just the education a day, but the work you do every day and the high degree of collaboration. I'm eager to keep discussing and thinking about how we can pilot new tools and deepen the partnership, and to Councilmember Cohen's point, get the community even more engaged in helping out. So this was a good study session for all of us. Appreciate everybody's time and attention, and I'm not seeing any other hands. So with that, we'll ask Tony if there's any public comment.
I have no cards.
Okay, coming back to the council, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you all.